Good evening. I call to order the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, City of Lake City, 7th of November, 2023. All please stand for the plat, remain standing for the implication. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we come to you tonight thanking and praising you for this day. You kept us all day long safe in your hand. Yes, that you would bless this meeting, have it to be done on one accord. We come against any unnecessary hindrances that we find in the name of Jesus' Prayer. That everything be done decently and in order, in Jesus' name.
Amen. Now, they see him? Mr. Angelo, roll call of attendees.
Ms. McCollum?
Here.
Mr. Nelson? Mr. McMahon?
Here.
Mr. Carter?
Present.
And Mr. Lydic?
Present. All right, electronically, we had the meeting minutes of our previous session, 3rd of October, 2023, distributed. I trust everyone's had the opportunity to review those at this point. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes for the planning and zoning meeting as electronically submitted? Seeing and hearing none at this time, do we have a motion for their adoption?
Motion to adopt, meeting minutes 10-3-23.
Same. That's Carter and McKellum, by hand vote. Aye. Hands down, likewise opposed. All right, we have meeting minutes. Seeing we have no old business, moving on to new business, petition SD 23-03, petition submitted by Sylvester Warren and Vanessa George, owners for preliminary plat of parcel 11209 in the residential single-family three zoning district located on Columbia County parcel 11209, regulated by Land Development Regulation, City of Lake City, Section 4, Decimal 5. Mr. Angelo, will you please approach and introduce this petition?
All right, so this is a petition for a subdivision for the preliminary plat of Muffins Cove. They have met all the requirements of the Land Development Regulations for preliminary plats and are ready to move forward to the next phase. The next phase would be the construction plans along with the final plat, and then that would go in front of the council.
There. All right, so final plat would not have to come before us.
Right.
Okay. All right, at this time, do we have anyone on behalf of the petitioners that would like to come forward? Please, Carol.
Hi.
The testimony you're about to give this evening, to the best of your knowledge and ability, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Very nice. Name was spelling and legal address and record for Mr. Angelo?
Carol Chadwick, C.A.R.O.L.C.H.A.D.W.I.C.K., 2008 Southwest Fairhopes, Glen Lake City.
All right, anything you'd like to accomplish this evening?
Well, we would, uh, we're asking for the approval of the preliminary plat. Although I'm not the submitter, I did some engineering for the reports and application. And this is, uh, seems pretty straightforward because there's really nothing else that you could put there besides a subdivision. And all of the LDRs have been met, so we're asking for your approval.
All right, and I'm trying to go through the agenda packet here. Maybe you can refresh my memory. How many individual units are going to go onto this subdivision?
It's 12.
12.
Okay.
Move back.
I think I got it.
14.
Uh, 14? I didn't get it and count up that high.
Page 27, it says there's 19.
We've got 19.
19 residential lots. On two and a half acres.
All right, anything else you'd like to add, prescribe?
No, it's going to be using existing infrastructure and utilities, which is great. And obviously, Lake City needs more housing.
Anything else for the petitioners represented? All right, you may proceed. Is there anyone else in attendance that would like to speak either for or against petition SD 23-03 as presented by Agent of other? Seeing and hearing none, do we have a motion to close public comment?
Motion to close public comment?
Second.
Motion second by hand sign?
Aye.
Aye. Hands down, likewise opposed. All right, discussion amongst the board and city departments. Anything?
Everything's, uh, it's, uh, straightforward to me.
All right, hearing and seeing no further discussion, do we have a motion to either approve or disapprove petition SD 23-03 as presented?
Motion to approve SD 23-03 as presented.
Second.
Carter and McMahon with the motion and the second. Mr. Angelo, will you please call the ayes and the nays?
Ms. McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson? Uh, Mr. McMahon?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
And Mr. Lydic?
Yay. All right, congratulations, petition approved. And I'll stay in.
I mean, you want me to, Mr. Chen, I mean, I will.
You're welcome to, or the barrier. All right, next item on the agenda, petition SPR 23-14, petition submitted by R. Ray Hicks Jr., acting as agent for Boris Patricia Fay Removable Living Trust as owner, site plan review for a tractor supply company in the commercial intensive zoning district located on parcels 13061, 13070, 13079, and 13092, regulated by Land Development Regulation, City of Lake City, Section 4, Decimal 13. Mr. Angelo, I remind you, you're still under oath. Would you please introduce this petition?
All right, this is for SPR 23-14. It's for a tractor supply site plan, which will be built next to the current Sable Lot. And it, um, it does meet all the conditions of the LDR and would be conducive to use according to Section 4.13.2.1. They have also met the zoning requirements. They did rezone this property from commercial to commercial intensive. And they had to vacate a AAA that was through there, and that has all been done and completed already.
All right, anything else for the benefit of the board? All right, thank you. Do we have Mr. R. Ray Hicks Jr. acting as agent with us this evening?
Mr. Hicks is not here, but I am here. Why?
Let's get you identified first. The testimony you're about to give this evening, to the best of your knowledge and ability, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Very nice. Name was spelling and legal address and record for Mr. Angelo, please.
Paul Marcinko, P.A.U.L.M.A.R.C.I.N.K.O. I'm with Jade Consulting, that's 208 North Grino Road, Fairhope, Alabama. That's quite a drive. It was, but I showed up early, saw Mr. Angelo, and then went and got a haircut, so I look different than I did earlier, right down the street. Anyway, enough of that. My name's Paul Marcinko, Jade Consulting. This project, as you said, was stated, is a tractor supply company, 21,930 square foot building on approximately 3.57 acres. I am here, my client is here as well, and we are here to answer any questions that you may have about this project.
All right, um, one thing I'm, uh, I'm noticing on here, the, uh, the large retention feature out at the, uh, the front of this parcel, is that intended to be fenced?
Uh, no, sir, it is a shallow, dry pond. It is designed to be dry, it will not be a wet detention pond.
Okay, just all the contour lines kind of through, then, I guess?
Yes, I, I say shallow, I mean, it is four or five feet deep, but it will not be a wet pond by Water Management District standards. We will get that permit, it is under review right now. It is not required to have a fence unless it is a wet pond.
Okay. And did I hear you correct, you're still waiting on certain approvals? So any motion we would make would have to be contingent upon you receiving your additional approvals?
Absolutely, yes. DOT approval is under review. We're obviously sharing a driveway with the Sable Lot and the Family Dollar. The existing driveway is there, I believe the count is one, two, three, four, maybe even five. Those will all be closed down, approved, and one driveway will remain on TUS 90. So DOT, as well as Water Management District permits, will be in place before we start construction.
Okay, those are the only two you're still currently waiting on that we would have to make as contingency of this approval?
Yes, sir.
Correct. All right, any other questions for Agent of the proponent? Seeing and hearing none, you may proceed. Do we have anyone else in attendance that would like to speak either for or against petition SPR 23-14 as presented by Agent of petitioner? Seeing and hearing none, do we have a motion to close public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to close public comment?
Second.
Carter and McKellum, by hand vote, close public comment?
Aye.
Hands down, likewise opposed. All right, public comment at this time is now closed. Discussion amongst members of the board and city departments. Mr. Angelo, aside from the pending DOT approvals and the WMD approvals, everything else is promethedory as far as city departments are concerned?
Yes, sir. Yeah, everything else, all the utility departments, everybody, you see the staff, we're good with it.
All right, uh, any other further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, do we have a motion to either approve or approve with contingency of approval through DOT and WMD for permitting? Or a motion to deny petition SPR 23-14 as submitted?
Motion to approve SPR 23-14 as submitted.
With, with the contingencies?
Yes, yes. With the contingencies and everything else is approvals.
20 River Management and DOT.
Yeah. DOT and SWWMD.
I'll second that.
Carter and McMahon on the motion and the second. Mr. Angelo, would you call the ayes and the nays for approval of SPR 23-14?
Ms. McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. McMahon?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
And Mr. Lydic?
Yay. And a missed approval. Congratulations, we're getting a hardware store. Make sure you get your approvals first.
We need one on this side of town.
All right, at this time, we have no additional new business before the Planning and Zoning Board. However, we do have a pending workshop discussion presented by Mr. David Young, Director of Growth Management, which is also listed as being open for public discussion. Discussion of the Business Impact Estimate as required by Florida Statute 166, Decimal 041. Mr. Young, will you please approach? Mr. Cannon, do I need to swear him in for a workshop, and is he good to?
He's just providing information on a new statute.
Very nice.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This was a statute that the legislature passed and went into effect by COVID-19. And what it is, is any business impact, economic impact, we have to do a statement on any ordinance that would impact it. Now, if you read down through the first page, we have exempt ordinances, which, A, we would fall under relating to growth policy, county and municipal planning, land development regulation, including zoning, development orders, and development agreements, and development permits, along with Florida Building Code, Florida Fire Prevention Code, also community development districts. However, we are going to do one of these, this is impact statement, business economic impact statement, for every ordinance, regardless if we're exempt from it or not, just to cross all our teeth and dot all our i's.
And because the vast majority of what comes out of this board eventually goes to council as an adopted ordinance, after it passes this level, there will be one of these statements in the package for each thing that comes out of this board that goes to council for initial ratification.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And if you look at the second and third page, that is the actual business impact estimate that we'll be using. If we check one of these boxes or do not check one of these boxes, we would still go through. And on the second page of that, we have, number one, a summary of the proposed ordinance. And it must include a statement of public purpose, such as serving the public health, safety, morals, and welfare. Number two is an estimate of economic, direct economic impact of the proposed ordinance on private for-profit businesses in the city, if any, and an estimate of direct compliance costs that businesses may reasonably incur, any new change or fee imposed by the proposed ordinance or for which businesses would be financially responsible, and an estimate of the city's regulatory costs, including estimated revenues from any new charges of fees to cover those costs. Number three would be a good faith estimate of the number of businesses likely to be impacted by the proposed ordinance. Additional information that we are going to be doing, if you're reading this, it says, for example, city staff soliciting comments from business in the city as to the potential impact. We will be doing that by using our business tax receipt, uh, call it, a computer program where we have all the eaddress, email addresses on everybody who has gotten a business tax receipt through the city. So we will be notifying all of the businesses like that. We will also be bringing in before planning and zoning, Board of Appeals, and, and Historical Preservation Agency, if required, you know, it could probably be just one or none. But that would open to public forum, and we would have comments from the public then. And that is another source for us to gain comments and see if we are creating something that may cause problems with businesses in the city or may not cause. One example that I'm looking at now is our, our permitting fees, which wouldn't come through here, but that is a direct impact on businesses in the city, contractors especially. So that would be one. Coming through here with ordinances that would be changing zonings might impact businesses. So we have to look at that. And that's why we want to, even though we're exempt, we want to make sure that we're following due process on this and making sure that we have everything covered.
Now, in addition to assessing the potential impacts to standing business by, you know, ordinances that may or may not come through this board, are there requirements that we need to act upon that assessment? For example, if something is going to increase competition for a standing business, is that a reason why something may get shot down due to the fact that it's going to affect the three other people that do that same business already?
No, sir.
Okay.
That would not.
Then in determining an estimate of direct economic impact, is that all happening in-house? Are we using outside consultants? What's the financial burden on us going to be for this?
This is, this is where we're doing the email out to the business owners and also in public forums to get comments back, to see if we are having businesses incur a cost because of something we're doing.
Okay. So this, this won't affect necessarily new petitioners and their ability to, you know, exercise their right of owning property? Because it mostly just deals with the administration of city and city departments and that.
Yes. But we will be bringing it up in planning and zoning for public comments if we have anything coming through that's an ordinance. We are going to bring it up and have it, the public be able to comment on. Also, like I said, we'll be sending out on that ordinance to all of the businesses that are registered in our business tax receipt program and getting feedback from them.
I have a question. You, are you, just now, are you saying that when folks have questions or when folks have public comment, they are going to come to the Planning and Zoning Board meeting?
Well, this is one place we're going to bring it up and have a public forum on it. One place, on any of the ordinances that would be coming through the Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustments or Historical Preservation Agency. Only those would we bring in here.
Any additional questions for Mr. Young?
It's another unfunded mandate.
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting that. I didn't want to say it out loud, but yes, I'm, I'm getting that, Mr. Young, thank you. All right, this obviously isn't something we have to act upon. This is just a, a workshop issue that's been brought up. Do we have any additional discussion? Mr. Angelo, I see you raising your eyebrows down there. Just looking to work on your plate?
Yes.
Okay. You getting a raise and pay for that?
Nope.
No? Okay.
We got him set up, Larry.
Oh. All right, well, it'll be interesting to see how this brave new one works out. Thank you, Mr. Young. At this time, if there is nothing else, we have no further workshop items on the agenda for planning and zoning. Do we have a motion to adjourn the planning and zoning portion of tonight's evening?
Motion to adjourn planning and zoning.
Second.
That's Carter and McMahon with the second, by hand vote for adjournment?
Aye.
Hands down, likewise opposed. All right, down the format of the three of them. Runs a little late. All right, at this time, I call to order Board of Adjustment, City of Lake City, 7th of November, 2023, in regular session. Roll call shall remain the same. Electronic copies of our meeting minutes from 10-3-2023 were distributed electronically. I trust everyone's had the opportunity to read those over at this time. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes as electronically submitted?
That's, um, it's, um, it's, um, 10-17.
Got 10-17, wrote that up a bit. Oh, okay. I guess I've got a title on my hard copy there.
That's Board of Adjustment.
Board of Adjustment?
Oh, it's, uh, never been in this store.
No, Board of Board of Adjustment.
I'm sorry.
All right, seeing and hearing no additions, corrections, or deletions, do we have a motion for adoption of minutes of Board of Adjustment meeting, 10-3-2023?
Motion to adopt, 10-3-2023, Board of Adjustment meetings.
That's Carter and McKellum with the second, by hand vote, please sign?
Aye.
Aye. Hands down, likewise opposed. All right, we have meeting minutes from previous session approved. Board of Adjustment, seeing nothing on our agenda for old business and nothing on our agenda for new business. Do we have any unlisted workshop items that need to be brought up either by a member of the board or city administrators or our benevolent council? Seeing and hearing none at this time, there are no workshop items. Do we have a motion to adjourn the Board of Adjustments, City of Lake City?
Motion to adjourn Board of Adjustments.
Second.
That's Mr. Carter and Mr. McMahon with the second. By hand vote for adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. Hands down, likewise opposed. unanimously, we are finished with the Board of Adjustments. All right, at this time, I call to order Historic Preservation Agency, City of Lake City, November 7th, 2023. Roll call shall remain the same. Electronically, we had meeting minutes from our 10-17, 2023, no, 2025, meeting which were sent out by Mr. Angelo. Do we, I trust everyone's had the opportunity to review those minutes as electronically submitted. At this time, do we have any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes as electronically submitted? Seeing and hearing none from the board, do we have a motion for their adoption?
Motion to adopt minutes, 10-17.
Second.
Carter and McMahon with the second, by hand vote for approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Hands down, like sign opposed. unanimously, we have meeting minutes from 10-17, 2023, adopted. Old business, at this time, do we have a motion to untable COA 23-31, which was tabled October 17th, 2023?
Motion to untable COA 23-31.
Second.
Carter and McKellum with the second, all in favor of untabling, hand vote?
Aye.
Hands down, like sign opposed. All right, 23-31 is now laid back upon the table. Petition COA 23-31, submitted by Rocky Ford as owner requesting a certificate of appropriateness in a residential single-family three zoning district as established in Section 4, Decimal 5 of Land Development Regulation, City of Lake City, located within the view shed of the Lake Isabella National Historic District as established in Section 10, Decimal 11, Decimal 2, Land Development Regulation, City of Lake City, on property described as City of Lake City parcel 13319000. Wait, wait, different meeting, you got a gift to get. You want to do the honors since he's a city employee, Mr. Cannon?
You remain under oath.
Oh, very nice.
All right, so this is COA 23-31, which was tabled at the previous meeting. And additionally, we have received a sketch of the building, what it's going to look like, that is in the packet. And that way, we can kind of see what's going to, go on with that. As far as the meeting, the LDR does meet all the requirements of the LDR and Section 4.5 for single-family homes.
All right, any additional material? Where was that? Okay, that is, where are we? That's the one, page 14 of 63, showing the internal configuration and external dimensions of the units themselves.
There would be a elevation view of the front of the building, which is going to show the porch. It's going to be a picture of the home, showing that the last siding is going to go all the way to the ground. And then also the elevation view of the porch is going to be on there along with the siding that's going to be wrapped in the porch.
Page 21.
Page 21. I just went to the wrong document. Bear with me for a second.
While there, look, Mr. Angelo, if you would confirm the notice requirements in place, the mail receipts and posting and all into the evidence for this particular meeting?
Yes. Yeah, I'm there now.
Okay, on here does you all see a packet? This has, not only does it have for the historic application, but it also has for the planning and zoning board Board of Adjustments and all the historic applications. This is all the meeting notices that went out, the public notices that went out in the paper, along with the property postings, pictures, proofs of all that. And in the packet, you will also see where the notice was sent out, certified letter, and the proofs of those are in each one of the packets included in store.
Replacing those with evidence for the record.
Yes, yeah. And also have, uh, some things for the public at the, uh, table in the pack.
Okay, so moving forward, we will begin seeing these in our agenda packets as part of the packet itself.
Yeah, all the meetings, you're going to start seeing that in every one of the packets. If it's one that has the, where it's just a newspaper notice for the, uh, agenda, that you were going to see as a, um, probably as a separate line item versus in each one of the packets, or you may see it in each one of the packets. We haven't determined that yet, but going forward, you will see that in every one of the agendas.
All right, uh, anything else for the benefit of the Board?
That's it.
All right, you may be seated. All right, at this time, Mr. Ford, would you like to approach? Is for testimony you're about to give this evening, the best of your knowledge and ability is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And, uh, I imagine he has your name with legal spelling and address of record?
Yep.
Mr. Ford, when we get started, you're asking these be placed in evidence in the record?
Yes.
For their application?
Yes.
All right, and so what we'll do is, um, so the record is clear, the photograph of the front porch would be Exhibit A, and the, um, I believe this is the property appraiser's worksheet.
Yeah, at the last meeting, they brought up that the lots were tied together, and I told you property appraisal was working on splitting those two lots. That's a lot split with a partial ID number for each lot, um, for the property appraisal workshop. And, uh, you have a front view, front elevation view already that I could give to Mr. Angelo, and that's just a side view, and that's a survey of the lots, a copy of, of the survey of the lots.
So our record is clear then. Exhibit A, that being evidence is a picture of the one passed out tonight, the side view of the front porch. Exhibit B would be the property appraisal card passed out tonight. Exhibit C would be the, uh, docu, uh, photograph of the front of the residence previously provided.
Yeah, at the last meeting, um, some of the Board members asked if I have better photographs and, uh, hope I presented something that you can see what is, what the final result's going to look like. Um, and other than that, I really don't have a whole lot more to add. I mean, it's just, you know, it was pretty well discussed at the last meeting, so. If you don't have any questions, I'll be glad to answer anything that you'd like to get.
Anything for the proponent that we did not go into last meeting before we open forth for public comment? All right, as we do have a full house, no doubt, there will be quite a bit of public comment. At the conclusion of public comment, we may bring you back up to, uh, to rebut issues that require a, a direct response.
Can, can I just add one more thing before I sit down?
By all means.
Okay, it was stated before the last meeting that we were only addressing the aesthetics of the house. I think the comments went way beyond that last time, and, um, I would ask that we stick to the aesthetics.
I'm, I'm going to issue the same admonition I, I issued last time, and hopefully it gets abided by a bit, a bit better than it was. All right, so at this time, because this is the Historic Preservation Agency and not the Planning and Zoning Board, uh, the fact that this is a manufactured home is permissible in an RSF III district. And to what Mr. Ford just alluded to, the, the public hearing and public comment that we're having right now is not to focus on the fact that it is a manufactured or a stick-built home. This is to determine whether or not the petitioner, in the eyes of the Board and the city, have done a sufficient job applying the national register criteria listed in Section 10 of the LDRs, as well as the documents referenced, such as the Secretary of the Interior standards for, uh, historic preservation. So what this is really doing is, um, taking comment on whether or not the proposal as submitted by the proponent does or does not meet the national register criteria for this National Historic District, not whether the home was manufactured onsite or offsite. So let's limit our comments to that. I see a lot of repeat faces here, so I'm going to bore you again with the same old speech I always give. I do not like using that clock. I find that it makes for a much more contentious environment. It makes people have to speed through their comments and sometimes get a little bit discombobulated. So if you guys play ball, I'll play ball, and we will not turn the three-minute clock on and limit comment. However, be very respectful of our time, the city administrator's time, our attorney's time, which I understand bills out by the hour, and everyone else in this room. So I'll start as I would do, down on, um, my front right, so it'll be this gentleman here. We'll go row by row, and I'll back up a row each time. Everyone that wishes to have the opportunity to speak will have the opportunity to speak. Uh, one thing that we are going to do is we're going to limit go-bangs. Last time, we had some people coming up to the podium three, four times. A simple rebuttal may be needed. We'll do that at the end after everyone has had the chance to make their comment, and if we have a couple of go-bangs at that point, I want to try to keep us, uh, on track. I think we were in here for, what, almost two and a half hours last time we debated this issue? I'd like to have you out here earlier if we can. So that being said, are there anyone else in attendance that would like to speak either for or against petition COA 23-31, beginning at my right, your left, second row? Going down, Mr. Warren. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give this evening, to the best of your knowledge and ability, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Very nice. Name and spelling and legal address of record for Mr. Angelo?
Sylvester Warren, S-Y-L-V-E-S-T-E-R-W-A-R-R-E-N, the third, 832 Northeast Richardson Terrace. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. And members, um, I, I think it's very important that, I was here the last meeting, and I did speak, and I think it's very important that we look at things from a standpoint of supply and demand, a standpoint of need, and we're in a crisis when it comes to housing. We're in a crisis when it comes to people who are willing to invest in certain communities, which I'm grateful that people are, such as Mr. Ford. What I am greatly concerned about, and it frustrates me, I can't speak for anybody else but me personally, that it was approved at one point, the notices got changed because it was a misnotice, but it's the overarching and the, almost the bullying of folks and the support of the Board of folks being bullied to overmake a 2023 or 24 building look retro when it's impossible for it to look like certain people were wanting it to look like 1876. You just can't get that out of that. And so what we have to do is reason and say common sense prevailed and saying, hey, we don't live in that year anymore. This is the closest we can get to it. He's tried four or five times to please people, in which he doesn't have to. I wouldn't, I would just sue the Board and take it to court and easily win, right? But Mr. Ford is just one of those people that just keeps bending over and bending over and, um, trying to do it the right way and assist in giving them as much of a historic look as he can. I'm like, I, I just don't understand what more can you do to make it look historical? And then on top of that, if you go around, I don't know quite sure with, for me, with the area, I got property in that area, I mean, there's stuff in that area that don't look historical, it's still. So if we're going to nitpick about Mr. Ford, then I think maybe we bulldoze down some stuff that's already there that don't fit. Or we let Mr. Ford ride out, and I think that's the only fair assessment, in my opinion. Mr. Chair, members, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Uh, let's see, so in your row, moving over, if you guys like to speak? All right, coming back a row. Come on down. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give this evening to this Board is, to the best of your knowledge and ability, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Very nice. Please state your name with spelling and legal address of record for Mr. Angelo.
That'd be James Smith, J-A-M-G-E-D-S, S-M-Y-T-H, 363 Southeast St. John's Street. And I just wanted to mention that it's not really totally about the looks of the house. It's, it's about the looks of the house in 30 years or 20 years. I guess that's all I wanted to really say, you know, as, as opposed to what was said.
Very nice. Now, that was very respectful of time. Thank you. All right, from where he was seated, moving to my right, y'all's left, ma'am, would you like to come up and speak?
Yes.
Please approach. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give this evening, to the best of your knowledge and ability, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Very nice. Uh, legal name with address of record, uh, for Mr. Angelo?
Okay, Johanna, it's J-O-H-N-N-A, the last name is Smith, 288 Southeast Monroe Street. I'm not going to try to go over, but, um, so Mr. Ford was here on the 12th of September, um, and I believe that's where this, this, the problem is that the citizens were not notified, and it gave Mr. Ford the ability or the right to purchase those mobile homes and to do the site prep for them. And then we came on the 17th to, now that the citizens were afforded the, um, ability to speak, and, um, I have a couple of questions. Did Mr. Ford, when he was at that initial meeting, um, on the 12th, did he feel that he had already been approved? I mean, does anybody, did anybody here approve him and say, sure, go right ahead without the citizens having a say-so? And in addition, um, uh, the attorney, sir, what is your name?
Duncan.
Cannon?
Please direct your comments through the chair. I, I will reference to the attorney.
Oh, good, do, okay. So Mr. Cannon, correct?
Cannon.
Cannon. Did, is Mr. Cannon supposed to be at every meeting? Can the Board make a decision without the attorney being here? And if we can't, if you cannot, then should the meeting be continued or should it be stopped until the attorney has the ability to come in for whatever reason? Because I think we had a, a motion on the Board, and it was second, and then Council Wong McCallum, she had concerns about the attorney being here. And that, I'm just asking, is it necessary that the attorney be here to make those decisions? Um, in addition, um, I mean, and then I have a question about this, the, um, the historic preservation. I don't think I have a copy of that, of what exactly it, it demands, requires for a piece of property to be built. Uh, what is the requirements that they're asking that we feel he's not meeting? Do we have a copy of that, or where can I find a copy of that to learn about that? And what exactly does, you know, that, that says? And is, and is he truly adhering to those? Is, can I get an answer for that, or will we answer at the end?
I'll, I'll address your, your, your comments when you, when you conclude.
I'm good, yeah, mhm.
You're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, okay, uh, within our land development regulations, uh, Section 10, the LDRs.
Okay.
Uh, the four primary design guidelines, you'll find them at Section 10, Decimal 11, Decimal 2.
Okay.
Um, the first two of them, uh, Subpart 1 and Subpart 2 are the LDRs themselves. Uh, and if you flip back to Section 10, Decimal 3, I'm sorry, 10, where do we have? Oh, sorry, 10, Decimal 6, you'll see the criteria for the designation of a property. Those are the designation criteria that pretty much outline the purpose of a district. And for this particular issue, it would refer probably to 10, Decimal 6, Decimal 6, 10, Decimal 6, Decimal 7, 10, Decimal 6, Decimal 8, in terms of distinguishing characteristics, uh, definable area of a, you know, past aesthetic and a character as established within a definable neighborhood, united in culture, architectural style, physical plan, and development. So the LDR itself, as well as documents that are referenced by proxy, such as this publication from the United States Department of Interior for the Treatment of Historic Structures, which is referenced directly in the LDRs, are the criteria that the proponent applies when, when petitioning and that we take into account when determining if the proponent has either met or not met that burden.
Okay, and just one more thing, I just want to add that.
And then, well, hold on, you had another issue?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Cannon? Uh, please correct me if I'm mistaken, but it has not been mandated that your presence is required as part of our quorum.
That is correct.
Uh, you serve as ex officio member of this Board strictly for advice and, uh, and clarification. However, this Board can conduct its business in the absence of yourself or one of your law partners. Is that correct?
That is correct for this Board, yes.
Okay, and that satisfied your two issues?
It, it did, I'm just wondering why Ms. McCollum felt that she needs to postpone this and do it again, um, in order to that.
Due to the sensitive nature of how many members of the public had brought up a legal question, and Ms. McCollum can speak for herself, but I believe she thought delaying this until we could have the bearers that are way in would clear up some issues as it relates to questions that were brought up that Mr. Angelo couldn't answer and I couldn't answer.
All right.
Is that, is that a correct characterization of your, your?
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, from where she was seated, moving to my right, y'all's left, uh, ma'am in the red shirt, would you like to speak?
No, thank you.
Ms. Magus?
I just want to get out some papers or something.
Okay, uh, can you please direct them to Mr. Angelo and not to members of the Board, and we will have to have them entered into evidence, uh, as we did with, uh, Mr. Ford's drawings and, uh, lot profile statements. All right, ma'am on, uh, on the aisle, would you like to speak? Come on down. Just one moment, you put it down. There now, there's two of them. One more, look. All right, uh, Mr. Cannon, would you like to read into the record the, uh, attachment numbers you would like to assign to these, uh, new piece of evidence which were just submitted for record?
Yeah, Exhibit D will be a memo to the Lake City Florida Historic Preservation Agency, Road Management Department, and City Council from concerned citizens dated November 3rd, 2023. Exhibit E, the copy of Florida Statute 553.38, and a manufactured. And a manufactured application, blank application for manufactured home permit would be exhibit.
Yes. All right, thank you. Those have been entered into the public record. All right, ma'am, I'm sorry, you've been delayed. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give this evening in front of this board, to the best of your knowledge and ability, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Very nice. Name with spelling and legal address of record for Mr. Angelo, please.
Jane Hart, H A R T, 354 Southeast Church Avenue, Lake City.
All right, ma'am, you may proceed.
Yes, I've lived here for 24 years. I live on Lake Isabella. I've enjoyed living here. And I just do not want a manufactured home in my neighborhood. It would be right down the street from me. It doesn't go in with the atmosphere. These are older homes in this area. And it just would not fit. If Mr. Ford would put up three homes, we would be very happy about that. And I'm sure that he would be able to sell them in no time. A colonial small home would be just perfect. Even two bathroom, two bedroom would be fine. But we don't want manufactured homes. It doesn't blend with this area. There's so much history around Lake Isabella. The clubhouse, people have been having weddings and anniversaries. Meetings are held there. It's a beautiful area. And I don't want a manufactured home right down the street from where I live because it's going to affect the value of my home. My husband and I put a lot of money into our home. The minute a manufactured home is put up, the value of your house goes down. It just does not fit in this area. And I would hate to see this happen because it's going to degrade from this beautiful area of Lake City. You need to preserve all of the historical areas in your city. And by doing this, it's not going to be historical anymore. It's going to look like, I shouldn't say this, but it's going to look like Dog Patch from Little Abner 50 years ago. If he would put up three homes, we would be very happy about this. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Coming across the aisle, ma'am. Ms. Ford, you've already spoken, coming back a row, uh, madam. Ms. Brandon. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give before this board this evening, to the best of your knowledge and ability, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Very nice. Name with spelling and legal address of record for Mr. Angelo.
Brandon Beal, B R A N D O N, B as in boy, E I L, 144 Southeast Apache Way.
All right.
Similar to my comments at the last meeting, you know, we all know what happens when you put lipstick on a pig. Nothing. It's, it's still a pig. So adding a porch and horizontal siding to a mobile home, manufactured home, doesn't change the fact that it's a manufactured home. And aesthetically, it's not going to match. I agree with what's been said. Housing is, is a definite need in Lake City and Columbia County. And, and I'm thankful that Mr. Ford is wanting to develop property. But it just doesn't fit. Just because something's legal doesn't make, mean that it's the right thing to do. And in this case, you know, you can't fit a square peg into a round hole. So, so it's just not aesthetically going to fit in the historic preservation district.
Moving across the aisle, Brenda. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give before this board this evening, to the best of your knowledge and ability, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Very nice. Name with spelling and legal address of record for Mr. Angelo.
Brenda, B R E N D A, Douglas, D O U G L A S S, 310 Southeast Monroe Street.
All right.
The citizens of the Lake Isabella Historic District respectfully request that this board rescind the conditional approval that was given on September the 12th for a couple of reasons. Public was not notified. The homeowners residing within 300 feet of that property were not notified as required by the L D Rs. And as previously stated, it does not fit within the historical guidelines set forth by the Secretary of the Interior, by the City of Lake City's own L D R in regard to historic preservation. It doesn't fit the neighborhood. It's adjacent to the historic district. It's within the view shed of the historic district. The residents of the district are opposed, and I think this board needs to take all of that into consideration. Thank you.
Before we now call the next individual up to address her point, Mr. Cannon, the, uh, conditional approval that was approved on September 12th. Uh, the way this came back to us was that decision was completely quashed due to the lack of appropriateness.
That is correct, there's, you're not reconsidering that decision.
Correct.
It was essentially a start from the go, at the beginning, at the last meeting.
And, and quashing is the correct legal term to use in describing how it was thrown out?
Voided based on notice.
Voided, okay. Does that cover your concern?
I guess. All right.
Coming down the back row. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give before the board this evening, to the best of your knowledge and ability, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Very nice. Name with spelling and legal address of record for Mr. Angelo.
Patricia Trimble. P A T R I C I A, T R I M B L E, 325 Southeast Church Avenue. All right. On November the 7th of 2023, the Historic Preservation Agency will be having a meeting at 6:00 PM at 205 North Marion, right now. At this meeting, we'll be hearing the petition for the third time concerning the appropriateness of the appearance of manufactured homes to be placed adjacent to the Lake Isabella Historic Area. You remember, may remember, and we've just discussed this, that that same petition first scheduled in this public hearing held on the 12th. The problem was that the city forgot to invite all of us. The next public hearing was special, held on the 17th. Many citizens attended and testified as to the facade of the chosen manufactured home being inappropriate for subdivision plotted in 1939 and contiguous to the history district. The meeting was rescheduled to today. In case no one knew, Florida Statute, which you have 553.38, building construction standards, specifically states, local land use and zoning requirements, fire zones, building setback requirements, subdivision control, and on-site insulation requirements, as well as the review and regulation of architectural and aesthetic requirements, are specifically and entirely reserved to the local authorities. We are appalled that the city has either waived or pre-approved requirements, but now we're finding out it's a little bit different than last meeting. Specified by its own application for new manufactured home permit. We are also appalled that the city would even consider the placement of any home, whether stick-built or manufactured, within the view shed of our historic district. That is so inappropriate, both architecturally and aesthetically. In essence, we find the champion manufactured home, which is the subject of this public hearing, COA 23-31, to be architecturally inappropriate for this small but very diverse neighborhood of single-family homes within the view shed of historic Lake Isabella. We find the reference manufactured home may well be economically damaging to surrounding properties. We find the reference manufactured home to be aesthetically unpleasant and jarring to the, to the personality of the small neighborhood. We find the intrusion of this manufactured home design to be often deadly to the continued strong social character of this neighborhood. We don't want it. I'm with, with what Ms. Hart said. If he would build three nice homes, he's got enough land there. He could turn around and sell them, and we could keep exactly the characteristic we have going on in our historic area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Mr. Cannon, for the sake of the record, that these, uh, what was just read in, that was, uh, was that Attachment Delta Echo and Foxtrot?
That's correct.
Very nice. Oh, I lost my pad here. Hold on, there we go. All right, uh, continuing down the line, ma'am. All right, so we're going to jump to the rear row of chairs, and then, don't worry, we'll get to y'all. We'll get to the wall. Uh, behind Mr. Beal, uh, sir?
I'm here to give my support of the Historic Society. I'm a people mouth shut.
All right, understood. Very nice. Sir? Okay, to the back row, ma'am?
I'm here to learn.
Here to learn, very nice. All right, so starting over on the far, far left side, up against the wall, just on the other side of Mr. Cannon, ma'am? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give before the board this evening, to the best of your knowledge and ability, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Very nice. Name with spelling and legal address of record for Mr. Angelo.
Okay, Ben Douglas, B E N Douglas, D O U G L A S S, 360 Southeast Monroe Street. Which was 550 East Monroe Street for like 100 years before that. Uh, let me see, just a little bit of housekeeping. First of all, do we not have the ability to show the sketch of what the house was going to be? Do we have the ability to show that, so that everybody can see it? A few views, even, but none of those.
Uh, as, as he speaks, would you care to put up page, was it 21? Yes, page 21 of 63 for the updated packet, COA 23-31, as it went out, uh, over the email to members, and it should also be posted on the city's website. While he's posting that up?
Excellent, excellent. Okay, um, as an English major, I'm somebody that listens works closely. And earlier, when the gentleman was speaking, he was saying, uh, what the sketch of what the house is going to look like. I'm, I'm like, well, wait a minute, we have to approve it first, right? Really, we're here again over the same issue? This actually has a very long history with this piece of property and the current owner, going back, what, at least 15 years or so? This is what, the third inappropriate project he's proposed?
Uh, page 21 is what he asked for.
It reminds me of a little cartoon where the guy walks in, he says, I'd like coffee and a sweet roll. And I said, well, we're out of sweet rolls. Oh, okay. Well, can I have some more? Is he some sweet roll? First he wanted to do eight HUD duplexes, now we want to put trailers. It's interesting, you were talking about the historical preservation, oh, it meets this and this and this. Try to get that house on the historic register. It'll never happen. Try to do it, say, the day after it turns 30 years old, which 30 years is generally the lifespan of a building for tax purposes, et cetera, et cetera. Take the 31-year-old trailer and say, I'd like to put this on the historic register, please. Do you think it would happen? No, it's not going to happen. Um, look, things are not always what they seem. You're on the internet, you get pictures and memes and things. I got one the other day, it was a video, and it looked like a steak, it baked potatoes and a salad. And it got cut into it, and it was a cake. Well, I mean, that's kind of what we're talking about here. I mean, we're going to, oh my God. Are you kidding me? Oh my Jesus, no, 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 no.
Mark, mark your bearing.
That, that, oh, I'm in my bearings, I'm trying not to fall down. Um, can we enlarge this to make it look bigger? Okay, and then, so we're going to have that one, and then 15 feet away, there's going to be another one right next to it, right? That's about what I measured earlier. Now, if we also put up the land plat where it shows where his property is versus his other piece of property, because this is also, by the way, while I'm speaking to you guys, but I'm also speaking to everybody here. If these houses go in, the city's going to have to incur the expense of putting a road in, paving it, 33 feet wide minimum. Okay, and if you go and you look today and you see the metal markers that show the 33-foot width, you'll notice that the power poles are inside of that, so all those power poles need to be ripped out and moved. And then we're going to pay to, I guess the city, I guess us taxpayers are going to pay for another road to go in, right? And all this to accommodate what I would like to really classify as a poor investment. You know, there are just under 8,000 acres in the city of Lake City. Okay, I did that research myself. A little over 7,860 to be exact. But why does this have to go on this particular acre right here? I mean, if you're going to speculate and buy a property, don't do it in a historical area, I could have told you that. I mean, if you're going to, I mean, he's been involved in this piece of property for so long now, I can't imagine the amount of taxes. I know he's wanting to get his money out of it, but he's probably just made a bad investment. Sometimes it happens. This is a capitalist society. You buy a piece of property, hey, I'm going to do this later with it, guess what, I can't do it, maybe it was a bad decision. But should we all have to eat the cost of his poor investment? I think the answer is no. Should the city bear the cost of putting in a street after he comes in and puts two trailers that the day after 30 years will be worthless?
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give before this board, to the best of your knowledge and ability, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Name with spelling and legal address of record for Mr. Angelo.
Ann Douglas Skinner. A N N Douglas, D O U G L A S S, Skinner, S K I N N E R. 360 Southeast Monroe Street, Lake City. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My family moved into this house about 40 years ago. It was not in great shape because it needed renovation, a lot of renovation. The house is over 100 years old. When you take on that sort of project, you're taking on a lot. I was fortunate when we started it, and it took several years, in having someone who could help me make sure that what I did was appropriate to maintain the style of a historic home. And this took a lot of time and energy because when you're installing heat and air, because before it was a fireplace, you had to make sure that what you did was appropriate from the outside, and then you put all of those things that you have to have in order to do heat and air, where it was not visible right from the street. I was fortunate in that degree. In addition, my father-in-law, George Douglas, his father was the sheriff at one time of- In addition, my father-in-law, George Douglas, his father was the sheriff at one time of the county, and they were building a new sheriff's office, so he bought the building and had it moved. I was, it was explained to me about the importance of this building, and that when I renovated, to please maintain the historic value, which I did. I did not change anything that would take away the value. The flooring was done in such a way that you could take up the tilework and you would have the original floors there. I have had people come to visit to ask to see Babe Douglas's old office. There are not many of those left around in today's world, but I felt that it was an important thing for me to do. Fortunately, as time went by, I bought additional property that went from our house all the way to the lake. It's a very sizable piece of land. According to what I'm seeing, I could have that divided into as many as four spots and put a mobile home. I'm not going to do that. It's inappropriate, it is unkind to my neighbors, and it does not stand up to the meaning of a historic area. And I certainly appreciate it if you would think this through to the point of the historic value of the property. Thank you.
All right, moving to my right, y'all's left, on the back wall, ma'am? Ma'am?
This is mine.
Almost. You swear the testimony you're about to give before the board this evening to the best of your knowledge and ability is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
It is, yes.
Very nice. Name was spelling and legal address of record for Mr. Angelo.
Laura, L A U R A Hunter, 1288 Riverside Avenue, Fort White, Florida. I'm Mr. Ford's district, but I have interest in this other one. Okay? Well, this is my first meeting, and when I saw what was going on in the paper, I felt the need to be here and never intended to speak, but I have to. I was raised on Lake Isabelle, and I'm so happy to see you.
No, please, press your comment.
She bought my grandmother's house. My house is a two-story house on the lake directly across from the women's club and the family over here. Bought Gordon Granger's house. As you go around and you go down St. John's and you go down Camp Street and you go all the way around, I ride my bike around that lake every day of my life, chase on bikes. There's a lot of history there. I can tell you, everybody that lived in every house, and the house is still there. Some of the houses have been restored, some of them need work on them. I saw somebody picking up one the other day and working on it. A mobile home park does not need to be in a historical district. This would be the biggest mistake that you made. I have no problem with homes going in there, but you, the road, the little skinny church street going down, the little narrow road, you don't, you can't, you don't have the road for it first. You don't, you don't have the, I mean, why would you tear up something that's a historical district? Lake Isabelle, the women's club, all the way around, the Dr. Bradshaw, I can name everybody that lived on that lake. And this would be the biggest mistake you ever made. Thank you.
All right, continuing along to my right, y'all's left, back row, sir? Sir? Ma'am? You swear the testimony you're about to give before the board this evening to the best of your knowledge and ability is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Very nice. Name was spelling and legal address of record for Mr. Angelo.
My name is Mary Giebig, G I E B E I G, and my address, 377 Southeast Church Avenue. So, I just echo everything that's been said tonight. I grew up here, well, you're planning on speaking, but why not, right? And I grew up around Lake Isabella, and I love it. I love where we live. And looking at that just makes me sad, it's like, why put that there? I know our home is part of that historic district, it's old, it has its own set of issues. We're slowly working on trying to work on those, but that's just a part of what comes with everything. And trying to put something that just is not meant to be, just doesn't sound good. Thank you.
Sir? Oh, we're not to that part yet. You swear the testimony you're about to give before the board this evening to the best of your knowledge and ability is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Very nice. Now it's that time.
John Harrison, 448 Southeast St. John's. I'm living in a house that's 123 years old and 11 months and eight days, seven days. Anyway, and it's a job. It's a job. I appreciate your, this society. I didn't even know I was in the historic industry, there was such a thing in the historic industry, till a year ago, when I went to get a permit. But anyway, I appreciate y'all from beginning to end, the way you run this meeting, the way we come in here, white Americans salute the flag if we love this country. I appreciate the freedom of this country, the God-given freedom. This ain't, this ain't my city, this is God's. It's not ours, it's His. Whether we like it or not, He is the Lord, and everything in this, on this earth is His. And I see respect about that, and I appreciate that. My confusion right now is, I would really like to, how did I get a copy of this LDR? Do I get online to get a copy of that? Okay, I, I just wanna get, get that before I leave. This is definitely a country that's capitalist. But just because I got that money to go buy one of them demon hennesses and run up down the streets of Lake City 80 miles an hour in a 45 zone, that's not, that's not right. There are rules and regulations to everything, everything. And that's what I'm concerned about. As long as we give the rules and regulations and try to best, I'll be able to respect everybody, especially within any community, not just a historic, but definitely historic societies. I appreciate what y'all have done up here, what you're trying to do, I appreciate the words that have been said. I remember that little 18-year-old last week, no, 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 last week she was sitting there going, anyway, last meeting that spoke, and she did. And everybody, for the most part, is given an honest opinion. Well, an opinion to like knows is everybody's got one, but until they follow it, stay within those guidelines, and they're not, they're just another opinion. So my concern is that we do it right, and my faith in y'all is that you're trying to do that. The bottom line is, I wanna get a copy of the regulations for the historic society. Somebody leave me that website or wherever. I too, with a college, I've got a five-year degree, and I made A's and N's, so I can read. Some people can read, they don't know what to read. Bottom line is, God bless you, just be sure, who could I talk to before I leave to get those back?
You'll see Mr. Angelo, and you can see any URL for where you can access those on the city's website.
Okay, God bless you.
But even with a five-year degree, you gotta be careful though, 'cause some of it was written by lawyers like that.
Oh, yeah, well, my best friend in town, one of my best friends is Vernon Douglas, so if I need to go to the law, Vernon does. He was a judge for 26 years, and he's still practicing, so I, you know, and I was in the law enforcement part-time too at one time. God bless you, thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, Ms. Barber. Sorry we have to make you wait so long for your petition.
That's fine.
You swear the testimony you're about to give before the board this evening to the best of your knowledge and ability is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, it is. Barbara Limley, two bars and an A, Limley, L E M S and Mary, L E Y. The address is 393 Northwest Fairway Drive, Lake City. And I have a couple questions, statements. You know, the city was without Mr. Young for some time, the county tried to step in, and I don't think there was good coordination between the city and the county. They never seemed to get along in mesh well. And looking over the application packet, it was dated, I think it's September, but according to the information submitted, Mr. Ford had Gary Newsom sign to buy two units on July 26th, and that was before there was ever a meeting. And in the new manufactured home permit, it states, "Do not purchase property or a home before it has been approved for zoning-related standards." It may be zoning-related, but if you look at 4.5.1 districts and intent under residential single-family, it states in there, "It is the intent of these districts to provide for single-family homes of low to medium density, together with public and city public buildings, facilities, and accessory structures as may be desirable and compatible with such developments." And to me, this is not compatible with what's going on. Maybe, you know, I looked at mobile homes recently, he actually calls it a mobile home, salespeople call it a manufactured home, get away from the stigma of having a trailer, but if they were $90,000 homes, a lot of them would fit in this neighborhood, but that, like everybody said, is gonna look like a trailer. And I purchased a home that is under repair. I'll be here in front of you shortly, but this just does not jive. And there's some unanswered questions. The application had 302 or 306 McCray, and I checked with 911, Link, I did not check yesterday to see if the proper addresses had been obtained for these two lots.
That was in the exhibits that Mr. Ford handed up here. What was the exhibit number you would assign to this one, Mr. Cannon?
F.
B. Exhibit B that got placed into the record, he indicated that he had just got his final approvals for the 911 addressing.
Okay, so what are the 911 addresses going to be?
302 Southeast McCray and 308 Southeast McCray.
The other question that will be entering, repeat what you said, the addresses?
302 Southeast McCray and 308 Southeast McCray.
That's not possible.
302 gaining access by way of the 8th Street thruway once that turns into a driveway, I imagine.
Well, when I spoke with Link, he indicated they could not, one of them might be able to have a McCray address, because, he said, it has to be the front of the structure. And the front of the structure would be Dave. And I think I reported to Angelo that they have to have a Dave Street address for 911. How they became 302 or 308, I don't know.
Okay, we'll add this to the list we'll ask in a moment. All right, we have that question on the list.
When he made application in August, it came before in September, I personally think he thought he'd be able to swing it through, especially when there was no one here because of the city's inability to properly notice everybody, but I came to see how this worked because I knew I was had a structure that was going to be up for your review. And I just think that putting this sets a terrible precedent, because he might decide to sell the three lots that are behind mine adjacent to Mr. Hadley's, and I'll go, well, there's a trailer over there, why can't I put a trailer over here? What are you gonna say then? And I have not seen any confirmation as far as water and sewer being established. And right now, as stated in the previous meeting, that it's an unapproved street, grass, and I don't recall who said they, they mow it. You know, the city hasn't mowed it, they may have mowed a strip down McCray sometime in October, but if a trash truck is going down there, how long is a grass strip going to work? The taxpayers should not have to foot the bill for a street. Might put some gravel, some milling or something. And the issue with the power poles, they would have to be moved. And I just hope this board takes into consideration what will come forth if these are done. And the last thing is that there was a lot of problems between the city and the county in pulling up the mobile home permit. The county can't really give a permit until the city says everything is right, even though they'll, the county's gonna issue the permit, 'cause that was where the permit was born, was there. But the city could put some conditions on there that they would've had to live to if they were permitting it. And I just hope you guys think about what's gonna happen if you approve this. Thank you.
Moving down the back row, sir?
All right. May I, may I make an observation, sir?
You would have to come to the podium and be sworn in, but you have not yet spoken, so you still have right of public comment.
All right. These guys have given such good speeches.
Hold on, hold on. Let's get you to the microphone so all of our watchers can see you. Come on.
Okay.
You swear the testimony you're about to give before this board this evening to the best of your knowledge and ability is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
It is, I do.
I do, very nice. Name was spelling and legal address of record for Mr. Angelo.
Roger, R O D G E R, Hadley, H A D L E Y. And I've got two lots on Church at Monroe. I live in 345 Southeast Jonathan, J O N A T H A N Way, Lake City, 3202, 32025. All right. I don't remember any of you guys from the last three times I've been down here. I have been coming down here for about 10 years. I've made three really good speeches, and I've just, I've told them I'd come this time just to give my support. I'm totally impressed that we've got a lot better speeches than we used to have. All right, and, but we need to call this thing off. You know, I, I didn't used to walk with a cane, I used to hear a whole lot better than I do now. I'm wearing out. But these people are very sincere. They've got a beautiful neighborhood. A lot of those houses are doing anywhere from new windows to totally rebuilding them inside and out, and they don't need a trailer park next to them. You know, that's my observation. And, you know, we, you know, we need to make a serious decision to stop all this. All right, sell those lots, go someplace else. Amen.
All right, at this time, is there anyone else in attendance that has not yet had the chance to speak that wishes to? Ma'am? Ma'am? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give before this board tonight, to the best of your knowledge and ability, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, as long as you don't ask my age.
Ma'am, I would never do such a thing.
I am one of the few people that I've heard speak tonight.
Legal address of record from Mr. Angelo down here.
I can't be anonymous, huh?
No.
Louise, L-O-U-I-S-E, Driscoll, D-R-I-S-K-E-L-L. Out of everyone that spoke, I'm one of about two or three that actually, my property borders where it speaks into put these things. I agree with the concerns that have been brought up about the property values and the aesthetics. My concern is, this is a quiet neighborhood. It's a peaceful neighborhood. It's a neighborhood where, you know, you can set something on your porch and come back a week or two later and it's still there. But my question to Mr. Ford would be, when these things go in, and hopefully he's gonna get good people in there to rent them or sell them, whatever he's gonna do. But what happens if they don't? What recourse are we gonna have to go back to Mr. Ford and say, "You own the property if he's renting it. What are you gonna do about fixing it?" Hopefully, that's something we would never have to address. But I would like to know that we've got a forum to go to or someone to go to if that does become an issue. And that's all I got to say. I might, or this is the first meeting that I've come to and I'm impressed with the way y'all are handling it. So that's it.
Ma'am? The proponent for your information has stated on numerous occasions at his last two appearances before this board that his intention is to sell and not rent the grounds. That is a matter of public sworn testimony on two separate occasions.
That's a whole different situation. Okay.
All right, has anyone else not yet had the opportunity to speak? Ms. Mavis?
As I'm sure everybody does.
Not yet, not yet. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give before this board that you used to chair tonight is to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I'll work very hard, yes.
All right, we're gonna hold you to that, Ms. Mavis. You know the drill.
Mavis George Alice. 223 Southeast Church Avenue. He's rented so many times, he doesn't speak. As many of you will agree, this particular project is like a circle of game. It has had so many problems, so many questions. And paperwork, we've had it out earlier. And that Kaye handled. Everyone here understands law. Everyone here understands that a manufactured home came into being years ago because of storms and underhut. Because of, speaking in vernacular, many of us that will always be creditors. If you look at the roof of this one, and when you flip to the back, you've got color photographs in the back. We only do the back of the agenda back. Go all the way to the back when you turn to the back.
Starting on page 47, I think, is...
Those are houses in the neighborhood.
You're asking for the comparable properties in the neighborhood?
I'm incorrect.
Okay, those begin on page 47 of 63.
Look at the roof line. 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 When you ride around, your eye automatically goes to the roof. These have, I say it's two and a half. Two and a half to 12. That certainly is not a two and a half to 12 we're looking at here. That is the problem, one of the problems with these. That's the reason it's shocking. Speaking again in vernacular, they do look like old-fashioned creditors. To me, last meeting, one of the great properties, we brought in many photographs of manufactured homes. Honey, they were great. They had normal type roofs to them. They had stone siding on them. They really looked good, and I would not have minded living in one of those. The last paragraph of them that Kaye read, it's very true. It's not that it's a manufactured home. It's that it is totally antithetical to the look, feel, and personality of the neighborhood. The stack of regs that you read earlier, Chris, that's exactly what they're saying. We have been barred from speaking with other problems that are in attendance to this. Speaking only to the architecture and aesthetics, it is bad. Not because it's a manufactured home. Because the architecture and aesthetics, again, roof line, it does not lend in, fit in, in any way with the neighborhood's being explored. I believe, as, um, I don't see a map, Parker. I believe Barbara pointed out, he purchased these homes in July, before he even came to the city. The dirt pads went down before we even had the meeting in October. This, as was justified last time, Mr. Ford testified, I had preapproval. That's in there, guys. Whoever did it, preapproval? That's in there. More than that, I cannot say. We have met the law. We have met the interpretation of what it should be. What more can I say? If you can read, and if you can hear, you know the truth, right? Thank you very much.
Right, at this time, is there anyone who has not yet had the chance to speak either for or against petition COA-31 as presented by Mr. Ford? All right, at this time, I'm gonna call Mr. Ford back down to the podium to address issues that were directly raised.
All right, you heard a whole bunch there, Mr. Ford.
Well, I'd like to say, start with, I'm not tearing down any existing, in check, houses. This is making a problem. Number two, I agree with the gentleman. You gotta buy by all the rules, regulations, and laws. I've got with Mr. Angelo, I've got with Bill Fisher, Mr. David, and they told me what I needed to do, and I agreed to do everything they said I needed to do. I haven't tried to take any shortcuts. I'm not asking y'all to give me anything. I wanna buy by the rules. And according to Mr. Angelo, that's what I'm doing, so, you know. I spayed these out like they told me they needed to be spayed out to fit this neighborhood and how we needed to do it. And, you know, I don't know. I don't know what the architecture says you have to do or don't do. I depend on Mr. Angelo and your inspectorate to tell me what I need to do. And that's exactly what they done. And I've agreed to do anything they said I needed to do. So at this point, I mean, I don't know what else. But I will say, for 15 years, gentlemen, right, I've been here three times, I think, trying to get something done on this property. And every city, oh, I'm sorry. About every city council member sat in, while I was trying to get this approved, and told them, said, you know, look, he can put mobile homes on this property. Every city council member up here has said that at each, at every meeting. I got with Mr. Young. I started, I said, I said, look, I don't know what else to do with this property but put mobile homes. Everyone else said I can put mobile homes. They sat here at these meetings, the council members. Said, yes, he can put mobile homes on this property. So as a last resort, that's where I'm at. But you did ask me a question at the last meeting. Would I offer any alternative to anything besides putting these mobile homes on here? And I will offer an alternative to anyone in this room right now, or anyone else. I'll sell them, these lots, I'll sell everyone of them. If they wanna buy these lots, I'll sell them. 28th Avenue's a lot, they gotta...
That's outside my purview.
Well, I'm just saying.
I can't be a broker on this one.
Oh, and they're right. I have, I've got money in this property. And I've paid taxes on this property for 16 years, trying to do something with this property.
So, hold, hold, hold on. Are you saying that, are you saying you wanna continue this until such time as people can offer you money for the lots? Or were you just saying that?
No, I'm just saying if they wanna buy these lots, they are for sale. So, but no, I'm not saying I wanna stop anything we're doing tonight. But if they come to me tomorrow and said, here, I'll make you an offer on this lot to buy it.
I just want to make sure you aren't pulling this petition back, because otherwise...
No, I'm not pulling this to do hours. Yeah, no, no, I'm not pulling it back.
Okay.
Yeah, but, you know, like I said, I paid, I paid property taxes on this. Maintain this property, you know. I feel like I'm meeting the rules and regulations put forth to me to be able to do this project. And I feel as a citizen and a property owner, if I meet the rules and regulations and the LDRs, I have the right to do with my property what they say I can do with it, so. They've looked at, they've looked at the homes that they have, you know, some, said they have some problems. If there's an alternative that I need to do to the houses, if they will tell me what I need to do, I don't have any problem within reason of doing anything I can to satisfy Mr. Angelo or this board. But, you know, I've done exactly what I've been told I need to do, so. By the city and by, you know, everyone else, so. I'm not here to make anybody mad or already, but there again, you know, this neighborhood, there's certain things you can only do with it. I mean, I think this Limley's on the agenda after me. I sat here, me and my wife sat here in the last meeting, before the meeting, sat here talking. And she was telling everybody the house that she bought that she's trying to remodel was a crack house. I mean, so that tells you a little bit about this neighborhood.
I'm incorrect, I used to say a crack, it wasn't a crack house.
Well, I understand that. That's what she said, you know. So this, this neighborhood, and there's some nice houses there and nice people live there, I agree. But there's also some houses there that probably need to be bulldozed, you know, so. And like I said before, there's a need for affordable housing in Lake City and Clumby County. And I think there's a need for this, for these towns, in Clumby County.
Okay.
In Lake City.
Specifically, there was one question that was raised that they asked you to answer. And I'm very happy they directed that through the chair, so I can now direct it to you. Issue regarding your Dade Street cut-through, is that going to be something you're applying to the city to do? Or will you be asking that that be vacated and you'll be putting that in as your own private street? How is that going to work?
That is, when I've been addressed, the city told me that was a city street, so, you know. That's what I was told by Mr. Young, that that was a city street, that the city would address that street, so. But I'm okay with closing the street. But I mean, I don't own all the property on that street, so I don't have that say, but...
But that is a city street, and cover that in discussion.
Yeah, I mean, there's lots on that street that I don't own, so, you know. So that's up to the city how they handle that street, I don't know.
Right, at this time, do we have any additional questions, comments, or discussion from the board for the proponent? Right. Sir?
I have. If you don't mind, I had to leave and relieve myself of a conference call. Chevelle Young.
Oh, we're not there yet. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give before the board this evening, to the best of your knowledge and ability, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Chevelle Young. C-H-E-V, as in Victor, E-L-L-A. Last name Young, Y-O-U-N-G. 315 Southeast Perry Avenue, Lake City, Florida. Good evening. I came with the intentions of not speaking tonight, just hearing. And I hear all of the concerns, all the, um, from all the genuine people, the people who are very concerned about their properties. But it kind of sparked an awareness when I heard the cost to the city and the roads. And I just believe that this would need to be addressed to the city to find out about the road project. I don't know that it's wise to make that decision. And I know that the DLR, I believe it is.
LDR.
LDR. I understand that that's in place. And hopefully, that's gonna be worked on. There's gonna be some changes made, hopefully. I'm only one person. But it just seems that there's some things that is listed there that needs to be addressed. But when we're talking about incurring costs to the city, then the city needs to have a say-so. Because there is a budget there. Where's this gonna come from? Where are these funds gonna come from? So that's my concern when I've heard that. If there's someone here tonight who can answer that question. Maybe you know something that I don't know, I don't know a whole lot.
They don't give us a budget, ma'am?
I, that's my point exactly. But there is a budget. Where does these funds come from? Where a decision can be made that the city is going to be responsible, gonna incur these costs of two roads, I'm hearing.
Chair, I have a question. I haven't heard anything from Mr. Young or Mr. Angelo or anybody else at this point at any other time we've talked about this. Is there, is there a legal need to pave that road? With, if he develops houses on this land, does that look, does that road then legally must be paved? Because it's currently a road, that is already a road on a map and in use theoretically. Is there...
But it's grass.
Right, it's grass, but does it have to be paved?
If it's grass, it's not a road.
Well, I think it is a road. Lee?
Only on paper.
Okay.
In the LDR, there is no definitive answer as far as that the road has to be paved or whatever. There is requirements if the road is paved and what the conditions are at that point. But there is no requirement in the LDR to pave the road.
Okay. And again, my question derived from the person that came up and said that the cost about the taxpayers was gonna have to pay for these roads, this road project to be done. And I did ask Mr. Young, and he said, yes, it's in the LDR. So my, that's a big concern for me.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. At this time, do we have a motion to close public comment on...
You gotta, I see you're gonna give her both. Were you talking about the public or were you just talking about...
We were going to close public comment. Do you have a...
Yes, I have a family, yeah.
Let's make the go-backs quick.
Yeah, it's gonna be very quick. I thank Mr. Carter for bringing it up. Sometimes I'm confused when I come to these meetings and these different people come and they oppose certain things that they don't want, as if this is North Korea or Russia or something. Let me, let me say this at the outset. I don't understand, one, how Ms. Young can stand here and not understand the LDR. that a road does not have to be paved, when people could have crossed roads in District Ten that goes over to Swan Valley every day off of La Russa. It ain't paved, but it's a part of the city road, right? That's number one. Number two, she just tried to buy a mobile home on Monroe Street that's there for Mr. Sap, from, for her daughter, that sits on Monroe next to Ms. Ernestine Jones. Because I tried to help you locate the number to Mr. Sap. So there's mobile homes in that area already. And there's stuff that needs to be pushed down over there that they claim is historic. If we be honest, nothing in the historical district is in this historic estate. Some of the historical buildings got vinyl siding, vinyl siding did not come out.
Suspend your comments.
Vinyl siding did not come out in historical years. Uh, you have, let's take Ms. Hair, when their store burned down. It was rebuilt, it does not fit the historical characteristics of what the historical downtown looks like. And if we dive further into, uh, manufactured homes, and I heard someone say something about crime, that neighborhood been having shootings and killings over there for the longest. I mean, if you go pull the CAD report from the, uh, Police Department, uh, Mr. Butler, it'll show you that that was one of the hotspots up until about two, three months ago. And so, I don't find it fair that you, Mr. Chair, said that we were not discussing the fact that the mobile home couldn't go there based on the zoning aspect of it, but the facade of it. And as I look at that mobile, that manufactured home, not mobile home.
Right.
As I look at that manufactured home, and you have to be honest, it looks better than just about anything over there. I'm just being honest, for one, it's new, one is new.
Watch your comments.
And it looks better than a lot of stuff that's over there. And I'm going to make this comment and sit down. A comment was made about twenty years from now. The work could end at any time. Besides that, the way of the world is moving to manufactured homes, tiny homes, RV homes, container homes. Uh, apartments are going to be the future, and we're talking about the future. We're not talking about the main drag. I see if Mr. Ford was talking about, he's talking about putting some manufactured homes on Marion Street. That would be ridiculous, but the, the, the future? Really? Like, we, 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 we're going through this about the future. And I think that this board would, would show that they're intelligent enough, wise enough, and won't let emotions be the decision-making in the process of what is fair and right, not only to Mr. Ford, but to the rights of an individual in his country to be able to do what he or she wants to do with their land as long as it meets the, uh, LDR. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, not seeing any other hands at this time, do we have a motion to close public comment on petition COA twenty-three dash thirty-one?
Motion to close public comment on COA twenty-three dash thirty-one.
Second.
Carter and McKellen with the second by hand vote. Aye. Aye, hands down, likewise opposed. Public comment at this time is now closed. Discussion amongst members of the board and city departments.
Mr. Chair, and fellow board members, everybody. Um, I just want to, I have, I have a lot of thoughts on this, and I've developed them since our last meeting. And, uh, I've, I've walked up and down every street, and like ten streets in both directions. I used to live on Church. Uh, I think I really, this is just, this is just my opinion, but also, I think there's some, there's some facts here that we can't, uh, deny, which is, I very much, James, I very much empathize with everyone here and their opinions on this, this lot. I can't say that if it was my neighborhood, I wouldn't feel the same. But there's a very big difference, in my opinion, between what I empathize with and what I think that we are allowed to do as a board, what we have the right to do. I don't think, I don't think that there is a, especially in the view shed, especially several streets over, I don't think that there's a level of consistency of historical, um, design. I mean, you've got colonials, ranch houses, and everything else in between, um, to say that it must look this way, or it must look that way. I think that he, I think that the proponent seems to be doing a good job listening to Mr. Angelo and Mr. Young, trying to attempt to make it look nice for what it is. I think that, um, as much as, um, people have varying opinions on things, I don't, I think there's a level of, we don't get to force someone to build just what someone else liked on a, on a, on a piece of land. And I don't think that we have the right to deny this. I think that I empathize with the folks who spoke today. I love, um, that everyone's come and taken part in the process, I think that, I wish more people did on more things. And I have a knot in my stomach, because I don't like to have the opinion that everyone disagrees with. Um, but I, but I think that, I think that, well, that's, that's, that's how I feel, uh, chair, board, citizens. I think that, uh, there's a difference between what we have the right to do as, as a board, and, and I don't think we have the right to deny this.
I agree with Mr. Carter, it's a really tough one, I've gone back and forth on it since September. Um, I don't like the, the worry, the concern that people have, I, I do feel that. What I, what I do like is that this has gone from a very basic presentation to something that was approved. I mean, if we look at the language here, review and regulate the, uh, architectural and aesthetic requirements. Um, the, uh, proponent said he would work with the city, that was one of the contingent things, adding different, uh, features to the, to the home to make it look better. The original pictures weren't great, it's been improved, I like the fact that it's, this has been improved each time. I think there's, there is a reason sometimes why these things have gone on there for two months because of the process of improvement. Um, it's, it's a tough call, but I'm, I'm feeling the same as Mr. Carter.
I also think, just to add to the previous thoughts, um, when, uh, when, uh, when, uh, when we have an LDR, when we have rules and regulations and, um, and a, uh, a proponent goes out of their way to meet them, speaks to Mr. Young and Mr. Angelo over the course of many weeks, trying to make sure that he's, that he's meeting the requirements. And the requirements unfortunately are vague, because there is not a, there's not a specific look. This isn't, this isn't ten rows of streets with colonial houses. There's a lot of different things going on there. And there are a lot of houses, like some folks have said tonight, that will not look nearly as nice as these new buildings for a time. Also, again, I think there's a level of, if you, if you don't want something there at all, you can, you can buy that way. You know, I think that's, it's a hard thing to, to deal with, uh, it's a hard thing to, to, uh, discuss, but, I said, again, I think we're opening ourselves up to, I think we're opening the city up to lawsuits if he's meeting every single requirement. And we, can we say, we know, I mean, I don't, I don't know what we're, what we can do, so.
As far as the requirements go, and, you know, this is something I do professionally for a living, I'm in historic preservation, I've, uh, done this for decades now. Honestly, in my opinion, I don't believe Section ten decimal six decimal six, ten decimal six decimal seven, ten decimal six decimal eight, or the criteria in the SLI's guidelines under Section ten decimal eleven decimal two subpart two. I don't think those have been adequately addressed by the proponent such that this fits within the character, the definable area, the significant portion of this section of the city that was specifically set aside originally as the Lake Isabella District. Now, I perfectly respect your opinion, I perfectly respect your opinion, the only difference is, I, I do this for a living. So I'm always going to be a little more nitpicky, I deal with this at the federal level. And then when I joined this board, I had to learn to, to do this at the local level. I understand we do not live in St. Augustine, we do not live in Charleston, we do not live, you know, in an area that is specifically defined by the integrity of their historic districts. However, from my desk, working for the federal government, if this sort of proposal came through as a federal-level project, I would be inclined, under the four, uh, referenced sections of our LDR, to say, uh, the aesthetic and the visual appearance of this structure, uh, has not risen to, to a level that it would conform with the integrity of the district, in my opinion. That is my professional federal opinion, that is not necessarily an opinion that is shared communically.
And that is, and that is important, a distinction. Also, there are mobile homes within a, there is at least one within a street.
Yep, and there's also mobile homes in downtown Key West where they've been able to facade them whereby unless you walk right up to it, you can't tell. You can be driving by on one of the streets at twenty-five miles an hour, and you cannot tell that that was a manufactured home. But again, this is Lake City, Florida, this is not Key West, this is not Charleston, this is not St. Augustine. I'm somewhat biased in that I apply these, especially ten decimal eleven decimal two decimal two, a federal document. I apply this daily in the, in the exercise of my professional duties. I cannot believe the proponent has, you know, met the, the full intent of what some of these, these regs would indicate. Um, but I respect both your opinions. Um, if you would like to discuss before potentially we call for a motion.
I don't see the uniformity.
I can't hear her.
Microphone, please.
I don't see the uniformity of the housing in the historical district. You know, like you said, there are some houses that you look at and they're just like everyday houses. And then there are some that look like they've been built back in the day, and you can expect that. Um, I even go further and say that we have a property on Church Avenue. And, you know, just by looking at it, you wouldn't know that it's a duplex. But again, people have their property and they need to be able to do what they need to do with it according to the guidelines. So, I'm just kind of on the fence.
Does anyone have any further discussion, uh, Mr. Young, Mr. Angelo, you want to weigh in on anything? All right. Uh, at this time, do we have a motion to either approve or disapprove COA two-three dash three-one as submitted by the proponent?
I would make a motion to approve COA two-three dash three-one with the, with the original, with the original proposed caveat that he's worked with Mr. Angelo, Mr. Young, and met what they provide as requirements for the look of the structure.
I will second that, I strongly agree with those additional requirements.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Angelo, please call the a's and the nays.
Ms. McCollum?
Yes.
Bishop Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah.
And Mr. Leidy?
Under my previous stated objections under Section ten decimal six decimal six, ten decimal six decimal seven, ten decimal six decimal eight, and ten decimal eleven decimal two subpart two, I emphatically say nay. Mr. Angelo, am I correct in assuming that this non-unanimous approval will not result in the issuance of a COA until the fifteen-day waiting period pending the citizens' opportunity to bring this up as an appeal to the entire city council?
Correct.
Very nice.
Consider that done.
Yep, we will be appealing.
Congratulations, Mr. Ford, you have your trailers. New business.
He doesn't have them yet.
Please take your conversations out of the room, we still have important business to conduct.
Mr. Leidy, I would just like to say that's very unprofessional.
I understand. Hey, 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 hey!
Get outside!
I will have order in this room!
Do we need some support?
Ball. Uh, Mr. Young? Mr. Young's got it?
Mr. Young will call.
New business, petition COA twenty-three dash thirty-seven submitted by Barbara Lumley as owner requesting a certificate of appropriateness in a residential, single-family, three-zoning district as established in Section four dot five of Land Development Regulations, City of Lake City, located within the view shed of the Lake Isabella Historic District as established in Section ten decimal eleven decimal two. Land Development Regulations on Property described as City of Lake City parcel one-three-three-one-eight.
All right, so this is for COA twenty-three dash three-seven. Um, this is for four oh six southeast Monroe. Ms. Lumley is looking to replace the existing shingle roof with a galvanized roof, and that which is looking consistent with other homes in the district. She is also looking to, um, fix some of the broken windows, some wood windows with some new windows. You'll see pictures in the packet that show examples of the windows. She is also going to, um, change some of the exterior facade of the building. And then, um, you'll see some diagrams here as far as what she wants to, where she can break up to the base of the window and some other areas. Also, she is looking to put a carport and, uh, which would come out, and you'll also see a picture of that and also the elevations.
All right, um. Very good, I see that. All right, uh, Mr. Angelo? All right, now, Ms. Lumley?
Uh, can you bring up the next item, line? Uh, this is Barbara Lumley, as owner of the property at four oh six southeast Monroe. Sylvester may have been right, but in a crack house, but there was a lot of drugs and other stuff done in that property. And I hope that it will turn out nice and that you guys will give me approval for the windows. Pink color will be off the chart, I'm leaning toward a sandy pebbly gray.
Any?
Click on number, uh, the third icon on the bottom. If you can click on right here, it should go right to it, there you go.
That's the application, um, the home was gutted down to the studs. There'll be new wiring, windows, plumbing, and electrical. And all I would like is for you guys to kind of flip on down to the windows. to flip on down to the windows. It'll look like that. Continue on down. Continue. You know, I'm looking toward the pebble gray color. If you turn your head sideways, you can see what it looked like before. I think they're... Oh, you passed the color.
Sorry.
The other way.
I'm looking at some of the other applications. Yeah.
Well, the color's from the color chart. Sandy, pebbly gray with a silver galvalume.
And that's on page 10 of 28 from the COA packet. For those of you with pads in front of you, it'll be on that page, 10 out of 28, if they don't have it in the one on the big screen.
Which one are you going with?
The trim is... See where it says there's handwritten notes on the paint swatches, house color, trim color. It's on the right corner.
Go to COA 37.
No, that's not... It's way before that.
Right there. Scroll down, about 10 pages down.
Slowly. There's the window.
Should be next one, I think. Or one more. Yep.
That's the one. There you go.
You know, I'm leaning toward kind of this with a more almond-colored trim, because the windows are going to be almond. And the hole re-skirted with brick. And the breezeway, if you can see a picture. There's... Go another one. That's without the windows. And this will be the window here. As you can see, it was pretty much a ghetto house. And a slot right there. This area right here will be bricked up halfway and where it's open here, that will be bricked as well to close in the structure. I think that's about it. Any questions?
The brick for the skirting and the brick for finishing up the breezeway, is that going to be painted brick or raw brick?
Brick or old and new-looking brick. It won't be painted.
And then I noticed you have the handwritten note here on page 11 out of 28, wrapping columns.
Yeah, there's kind of wrought iron columns.
What's the product you're using?
Well, probably just use wood.
Okay, so framing them in carpentry style?
Carpentry style, wrapping the columns.
So they're not going to be wrapped in, say, masonry?
No.
Okay.
Wood. And we'll add handrails to repair the steps. And I've decided where the current driveway is right here. I'm going to make it so two cars can park here versus one car underneath the carport will be here. But I'm going to add some additional concrete there for parking. Any questions?
Any questions for the proponents from members of the board? I have none. You may be seated. This time, do we have anyone else in attendance that would like to speak either for or against COA 23-37 as submitted by the proponent? I remind you, you are still under oath.
Okay, okay.
You can state your name so we can...
John Harrison. From what that was to what she's proposing is definitely going to be an asset to the public community, know that. I wish I was... I don't wish I was there, but I wish I was farther along. Anyway, the bottom line is, I think she's doing a good job. I hope y'all consider that. It's going to look a whole lot better. That street's got some nice houses around it. And that will definitely pick up the look on that street on another, definitely.
All right, do we have anyone else in attendance that would like to speak either for or against petition COA 23-37 as submitted by the proponent?
Can I ask a question?
Can I?
It's turned... Is that on Mon... Where is that on Monroe? Is that in...
Yes, that's why it's being discussed this evening.
406 Southeast Monroe.
How old a house is it? Can we flip it back the other way?
1949. That's when it was built.
Ain't no historical here. So what's the proposal asked for that to be remodeled? Is that's what he's asking for?
It's actually Ms. Limley behind you.
Ms. Limley, she's asking for this to be remodeled?
She's having us review her proposed windows, her proposed wrapping of columns on the front porch and the use of architectural brick for replacing the lattice skirting underneath the structure to come into conformance with the historic aesthetic.
10.6, 10.6, 10.8, 10... And all... What was those other?
10.6, 10.7, 10.8, and 10.11 22.
And she's going to submit to me all of those?
When we discuss and we vote, you will find out. We're not going to discuss our vote with you before we call a vote.
No, no, no. I'm saying she submitted things.
Yes, she has submitted examples of the building.
Can I see examples of... I guess that's what I'm asking. I'm sorry, I made that.
You would like to see the entire proposal packet?
Yes, please. I'm sorry. If you would. I know you do this.
Show examples of the windows, the color palette, windows and breaking.
Can you go back? Those are the windows she's putting in? Those are not historical. Those are going to be...
Page 6 of 28 has an example of the mullion pattern. And then 7 of 28 has an example of the drop front on the singway.
Those are not... Is there anywhere that takes in the 340 vinyl that those are anything identical to historical windows? Because those are just flip-out windows. Those are just up-to-date windows that fold out.
Hold on, Ms. Limley, hold on.
They're nice.
And if you then go down to page 11 and look at the existing state of the structure, you will see that there are... You're going to want to... Yep. You'll see that pane over pane, aluminum windows were what was originally in the structure. So her pane over pane vinyl would actually be in conformance with the aesthetic of the historic nature of that property.
And the lattice?
The lattice is clearly an add-on afterwards. And restoring the brick skirting is going to increase the historic aesthetic and rehabilitate this back to probably its period of original construction.
I thought it was its original construction.
The lattice was not original to this.
No, I'm talking about it... That right there is its original construction.
That's the prior to work beginning on the property, yes.
Right, but the T still left as an add-on.
Yes, and we're not asking for its removal.
So I guess my thing is nothing in that district that is uniform. Nothing in that district is uniform and that's an add-on to a 1949 house. And I'm not... Respect the... I'll give you Mr. Chair. I'm just like, just pointing out the inconsistency of not only you but wanting to make sure that everybody get treated fairly in this area. I want Ms. Mary. I'm for this. All I'm doing is pointing out that she should be able to fix this house 100%. 100%. It needs to be fixed. It needs to be occupied. People need a place to stay. But again, there's no consistency with that house and some of the rest of the houses and apartment buildings and the mobile homes that's in there. And I think that we need to revisit how we go about dealing with the view shed versus how we go about dealing with the historic district, meaning the main drag, which is Marion Street and this view shed stuff, because it's just not there. It's just not there.
But I thought something we'll be concluding this evening. That's going to be a process.
It is. It's just not there. And these houses don't even meet historical needs.
So for the sake of the minutes and the record,
Yes, sir.
are you on the record as being either for or against us?
Oh, I'm for it.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm not against. I was just making a comparison about the lack of uniformity that this board needs to further look at. And I think maybe it may be a time now moving forward as we progress and we're growing as a city, that the view shed shouldn't even be a part of the historic district. Because there's no view shed that's consistent. I think the historic district itself should maintain its integrity, but the rest of it don't even have any integrity or uniformity.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in attendance wishing to speak either for or against COA 23-37?
Does she want to respond?
Oh, she's going to show the windows in Karen McDavid's house, old office. It's pretty much what I'm putting in.
Which was a style common to the late 1940s, early 1950s. Yes. Seeing and hearing no further public comment, we have a motion to close public comment on petition COA 23-37.
I'm just going to close public comment on COA 23-37.
By hand vote? I'm sorry, do we have a second?
Second.
A second with Ms. Mary down there. By hand vote? Aye. Hands down. Likewise opposed. Our public comment is closed on petition COA 23-37. Discussion amongst members of the board and city departments.
Think it looks great.
Not relating to this, but Mr. Young, that siren we heard out there a minute ago, was there a kerfuffle in our parking lot after I ordered the room cleared?
No, we had it in here.
No, we got hurt? Okay.
The best hotel we ever looked. The proponent and the last one back and his wife until everybody got cleared out.
Very nice, thank you, sir. All right, seeing and hearing no discussion amongst members of the board or city departments, do we have a motion to either approve or disapprove COA 23-37 as submitted by the proponent?
Motion to approve COA 23-37.
Second now?
There'll be a motion with Carter and a second with McMahon. Mr. Angelo, please call the a's and the nays.
Ms. McCollum?
Yes.
Bishop Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
And Ms. Leidy?
Yay. Congratulations, you have unanimous approval. I do remind you, your COA will not become active for 15 days after issuance to allow sufficient time for an appeal.
Okay, thank you.
Don't jump in on it right yet. The next item on our agenda, we have our consent agenda. There are four items here, of which we only have a quorum to vote on three of them. I have an issue that would require me to recuse myself from COA 23-34. We'll table that until such time as we have a sufficient quorum that that can be voted upon without the need for me to cast a vote. But Mr. Angelo, will you please introduce COA 23-33, 23-35, and 23-36?
So COA 23-33 is for Southeast Monroe, 506 Southeast Monroe.
All right, there. This is for an accessory structure and that they're looking to put and replace the old shed and put a new shed in its current location. And they are also going to paint the house to match the shed, but they're going to reverse the paint scheme. And that's in the trim of the house will match the exterior of the shed and the trim of the shed will match the exterior of the house.
All right, 23-35?
All right, this one is COA 23-35. It is for 153 Northeast Madison. They are looking to replace the old shingles with new charcoal-colored shingles, which would be consistent with the district.
And 23-36?
This one is COA 23-36 for 425 Southeast Brown. And they're looking to replace the existing light brown shingles with charcoal shingles. Color is consistent with the district.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Angelo from members of the board?
Do we need to make a motion to table COA 23-34?
We do with the affirmation from Mr. Leidy that he has had to abstain to vote on that as he and his wife are the petitioners. And while I'm thinking about it, Robert, we need to get the form from Aldry. When you announce a conflict and abstaining, we have to file one in the public record. Aldry has that form.
Okay. So would we just vote to ratify the three and then the...
I'm sorry. I would go ahead and make a motion to table COA 23-34 based on the fact that there's lack of a quorum as you and your wife are the petitioner for 23-34. Have that motion approved and then a motion to adopt the balance of the consent agenda, absent that petition.
Do we have that motion on the floor?
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to table the COA 23-34 as our board's chair, Ms. Leidy, and his wife. Are there proponents in that case until such times we have a quorum to approve or disapprove? Aye.
We have a motion and a second? On paper, hand sign?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and tabling carries. Let the record reflect... Wait, can we vote on that? Point of order. I didn't vote on that because it had to do with me. Should I have voted on that tabling? Am I allowed to vote on my own tabling? So we don't even have a quorum to table it? So in that case, if we make a motion to approve the three that we do have...
I think as a point of order, since you cannot vote, then we have to deal with that one at the subsequent meeting. We can deal with 33, 35, and 36. So it's obvious we can't comply with the law.
So let the record reflect that we did not have a sufficient quorum to table 23-34. Therefore, do we have a motion to ratify the consent agenda for items 23-33, 23-35, and 23-36, but without the ratification of 23-34?
I make a motion to ratify the consent agenda for COA 23, 33, 23, 35, and 23, 36, without ratifying COA 23, 34, as there is not currently a quorum to vote on that specific consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion and a second by hand sign, ratifying the other three. Aye. Hands down, likewise opposed. All right, those three on the consent agenda unanimously ratified. Seeing no workshop items, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Quick question. It was obviously talked about a lot. I know we've been here forever. I don't want to necessarily talk about it forever. But it's a... I'm curious. So when we're talking about the issues like the view shed and stuff like that, if you look up the... So this is a question, and I'm wondering like how we handle this. Obviously, it's not the last time that this is going to come up. The... If you look at the definition of view shed and how that definition applies to this situation, you could make a strong argument that that property we talked about earlier isn't in it. And we have a map that has a line that says it. But the definition of view shed means you can see it. And I don't... Like I said, I walked up and down those roads and from the actual... And I don't, I, like I said, I walked up and down those roads and from, from the actual historic preservation line, I really can't. I mean, it's that far away and I think that's another, that's another, uh, uh, tricky situation here is I think it's important not to be, you know, uh, like, right, like, right nearby is, is another, a long trailer, what everyone call it. It gets super hard, especially when it's in the view shed, not in the, not on the main drag, not inside the historic district, but in its view shed to, um, to say, no, it can be right there, but not right here. You know, I, I understand everyone has a lot of opinions and passions about that, uh, about this subject and it's an important one, that's what we are here to talk about, that's what we are here to, you know, where, why should I do judicial body that judges on these sort of things, you know? So, um, I think, uh.
Yeah, but those streets, they, they go a long way, you can stand in Monroe's school and look down some of the streets and you're going a long way. Sure, if you can see it, it gets, it gets very tricky.
Yeah, so, so, like, is there, is there a game?
Originally, as this was being devised and deliberated, I think it was back, refresh my memory, Mr. Young, this was your predecessor, Mr. Hathcox, that had decided since there is no objective way to characterize what is or is not view shed in the neighborhoods. It was a, um, it, it was a solution that was meant to be as objective as one could be by applying the one-block buffer around the legal jurisdictional limits.
But so we can, we, so, but it can be said that it is a somewhat arbitrary distance.
Well, and I think the issue's gonna be, oh, you're absolutely right, I think that the issue's gonna be some work on some more definitive definitions as to where the lines absolutely are.
Right.
Because you're right, there's very little in there on new construction.
Right.
Um, so we're in the process of looking at that now that we got Mr. Young back, um, and, uh, so, yeah, those are, those are things that, that we're taking into consideration, trying to make some revisions.
I just think it's important to point out, obviously, that our historic preservation agency was formed in the nineties, mid-nineties, um, a hundred years after many of those houses were built. You know, forty, fifty years after many of those other houses were built, that a lot happened in the historic area before there was ever a, a group who, who deemed to, to reside over that area. So, um, it's really hard with some of these, some of these places and these spots, as I said, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna sleep well tonight, this was tough, it's hard to look at a room full of people who are very mad at you. This was tough, it's been on my mind for weeks now, so I just wanted to say this.
I like that there's an outlet that regoes to city council.
Yeah, yeah, sure, I mean, you know, that's, that's, that's how, that's how it works.
They're elected.
That's how it works in there, I'm glad they're able to do that. We don't get paid to do this. But I do think it's, and I, and I guess, everything I'm talking about, not trying to ramble, but like, um, um, I would just be interested and I think it's important to, to get some, uh, some less vague terms, some real clarity on what the view shed is, what's actually in the view shed, like, you know, in reality versus on a map, um, and, and what sort of authority we have, you know? Because that, that's, my decisions today personally were based on a belief that we deny the authority to do that, as I stated earlier, so I just think that that's something that we, we need to look into, um, making a lot clearer to the citizen. Yes?
Mr. Chair, so let the board know kind of where we are, what we're doing as a department to help better the city and kind of work forward. And some of the things that we're looking to do, we're gonna, um, you know, the comprehensive plan has to be rewritten along with the LDR, the comprehensive plan kind of guides the LDR, they have to go hand in hand, so we're gonna start with the comprehensive plan, then work through the LDR, it's not gonna be an overnight, um, transition, so in the meantime, you will see probably a lot more changes amendments as we identify some of the issues in the LDR that we can correct really quick and that we can address those, more verbiage around, you know, clarity, stuff like that, you know, postings, you know, different things that we can do along with, you know, what's permitted and looking at some of the local jurisdictions and see any, you know, kind of where we can be more modernized than at what we are right now and, um, and kind of grow forward and that will have a lot of public input, you know, with that, you know, whole process.
And we'll have a seat at that table or we'll just expect to get handed something from city council?
That will be done.
Very nice.
That will be done from here.
Alright, uh, before I call for a motion to adjourn, uh, Mr. Young, Mr. Warren?
I'm sorry?
Thank you heartily for your efforts in controlling that out in the lobby when we had to attempt to maintain order, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
And y'all got hurt, right?
No, no, we're fine.
Alright, with that being said?
Motion to adjourn.
Very nice.
Second now.
And a second over here from Mr. McMahon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, you can sit here and wait. Please cut the audio, please cut the video.